All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for July 8, 2025. Thanks, everyone, for being accommodating with the room today. The town council is down in our regular setting, so we are here July 8 in the Johnson Chambers. The meeting, as usual, is being televised by B-CAM and is available on YouTube. We do have a full board this evening, and we will start, as we normally do, with the Old New Business on the agenda. And so I will jump right into it. The first item that we have on the agenda is a request for as-built approval and release of surety for Planning Board File 2208-575 Quincy Ave. That's Quirk Car Dealerships. I know that we have a staff report on that. Director Matczak, did you want to go over any of the items in the staff report? I will turn over the mic, and I will not break out.
Good evening, everyone. For the agenda item, we're speaking about 575 Quincy Ave Quirk Auto Dealership. This is the Genesis dealership. It's newly built. I believe it was approved not too long ago, but I did go on a site visit. I did walk the site. Everything looked up to par with the landscaping. Everything is professionally done. The as-built was circulated to the DPW. The DPW and the Stormwater team did take a look at it. They accepted all elements of this, and I just kind of want to kind of circle, you know, let the board know that staff departments did take a look at this. There was a few changes from the approved record plan. They were highlighted in the engineer's letter. I can tell you that all the changes were of note, were minor. I believe the previous planning director had knowledge of the changes. I believe they didn't really, in the back-left corner, they didn't build, I think, four parking spots. And then they also had an internal gate to the larger parking area owned by the Quirk LLC, which is a large parking area for hundreds of cars. And so having that access and that flow in between the two properties, I think, was appropriate, and limited additional paving into that parking area. At one point in the letter that you'll see, they did find some kind of significant drainage over in that area, so they did have to slide the building to accommodate for some infrastructure as they kind of got into the site, per se. However, everything was done was professional. Landscaping is looking good, and I think everyone should be proud of a good project.
All right. Are there any members that have any comments or questions? No? Okay, seeing none with that. I will just be looking for a motion on the staff report. The recommendation is to grant as-built approval with the surviving conditions and release the as-built surety. We have a motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Member Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is the minor modification for Planning Board File 1007, which is 260 Forbes Road. These are some EV car chargers. We have a staff report for this also, and I will turn it over again to Director Matczak.
Thank you so much. So this application came to me a little, a couple of weeks ago, and...
Yes?
Yes. Hi, how you doing? So reviewing the previous material, I kind of got a flavor for what was going on out here. And so if everyone can recall, the planning board can recall, back in February of this year, there was a minor modification the planning board approved for this project. And what the project was, is it approved some EV, excuse me. So this is 20 to 60 Forbes Road. Here's the site plan. I hope everyone can see it. This is the Hyatt Hotel, as my mouse is circling. This is the old Chili's Building, which is now going to be Tavern in the Square, which is under construction. There were some EV charging stations approved for this corner of the parking lot. The application or the modification that we hear, that we are reviewing tonight is to relocate the EV charging stations to this elbow of Forbes Road, right down in here. I believe in February of '25, the approval was for six charging stations to accommodate 12 parking spots. This modification will be for five chargers, which will accommodate 10 parking spots. There will be some infrastructure. Pardon my pardon. Here's a quick overview for folks in the audience, but everyone has, was kind of sent these plans. So this right here is the kind of the property line, and this is the robes of, excuse me, Forbes Road, that kind of elbow, as I noted before. So the infrastructure will be kind of set into this kind of slope right here, so there will be a little bit of a knee wall that have to be developed. And then, obviously, the transformer will have to be installed, the kind of the electrical infrastructure will have to be installed. But across the, across this kind of area, 10 spots, five chargers. There will be additional landscaping that will be installed as to the landscaping plan. Just to note, the existing mulch bed will be kind of redesigned, re-edged to accommodate the new landscaping, and, obviously, the infrastructure that has to be installed. I do want to note, this plan was reviewed by the fire department. We kind of went back and forth on it a little bit. Since it is in that elbow of the roadway, cars will be passing, excuse me, on this screen from left to right, taking that turn. So bollards were installed in case if there was any vehicles to kind of, that meandered off of the roadway. I know we have a representative of the applicant tonight, if the board has any questions, but that is kind of a 30,000-foot view into a review of the application. I think because this was previously approved in February, I think it's really just looking at the location. And, obviously, I would recommend that the conditions from the previous approval would just kind of move forth. In doing so and in the review of this, that's why we did want to circulate the staff report from February, the decision from February, just to kind of get everybody on the same page of the application, of the modification.
And start and see if there are members that have any questions.
No questions to support the modification.
Okay. Anyone over here? No. I just had one question, if you don't mind coming up and just introducing yourself.
Up here.
Yeah, sorry. Up here, to the microphone, please. Yeah.
Sure. My name is Jonathan Salzman. I'm the Director of Engineering for New Leaf Energy, and we're the applicant, with Callers helped us pull this all together.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the landscaping around there. I wasn't sure. I see there's quite a few shrubs. Do you know what size trees there are? And the reason, I guess, the reason I ask is when you come around that corner, the landscaping looks fairly nice, and then you can see, there's a utility box you can actually see on the bottom of that photo for the former Friendly's location. So I think it's sort of consistent with that. I was just wondering if the landscaping would block those or if they were more low-level, if you knew the answer to that question.
I don't. I'm a electrical engineer. I don't know exactly what they chose for that area. Does it say it on there?
Of the landscape, the planting?
I think they were wondering about the height of them. Yeah.
So there are three American sweet gums that are two to two-and-a-half feet tall when they are planted. Can anyone hear me?
Yes. Oh, I should probably give you this for B-CAM now.
So there are three American sweet gums. When they are planted, they'll be two to two-and-a-half feet tall. Then there are three chandel, I think it's, I'm sorry, pear trees. They're fairly regular. Those, again, will be two to two-and-a-half feet in size. And then there's some rhododendrons that will be installed, two to two-and-a-half feet tall. And then there will be a juniper, seven junipers, which will be 24 inches tall minimum at planting.
And I believe we went back to the original landscaping plan and reviewed the stuff that they had, and then I told them to try to choose plants that, like, don't make a mess. Whenever we're in parking lots, we don't want to have, like, things that make a mess and have, like, lots of leaves all over the place. So those are the two requests we had made. But I believe those are all things that were already in the existing landscaping plan for the entire plaza.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
So I guess with that, be looking for a recommendation on the staff report, which is a recommendation to approve the minor modification subject to the existing conditions? We have a motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Moving to the next item on our agenda is the minor modification for Planning Board File 2115, which is for 44 Allen Street. Attorney Marinelli, if you'd want to introduce yourself and go over what the changes are, that would be great.
Good evening, Chair Crowham, members of the Planning Board, Frank Marinelli. I'm pleased to appear before the board on behalf of Wynn and Wynn Properties and Arch Communities. With me is the Principal of Arch Communities, Rich Relic. Rich has been before the board since 2021, when we first came before the board for the approval of 56 residential units on the property that was formerly owned by Braintree Electric Light Department on Allen Street, as the chair said. There was an RFP. Wynn Arch was successful in the RFP. It's a very complicated site. People actually walked away from the site who had been previously successful with the RFP. So the town is fortunate to have a developer of the caliber of Wynn Properties, which is one of the biggest in the country, and it's about a, over $35 million development now, I think, with the costs of working on the water with pilings on the property. If you've driven by there, you can see that a lot of the site work has been done. It looks like a completely changed and improved site from the old buildings that were there with, with belt, including the old generator. So it's a great addition for the town and for housing. 56 units approved by the board tonight. The design was a bit overly ambitious in terms of the, not the residences, but the amenities area. We had tried to fit in a dog park, and I love dogs. I have two, a lab and a pet, and a golden doodle. I think we all love dogs, but it's inappropriate to have the dog park, the way it was designed in Exhibit 1, right next to the residential patio. That's an amenity area for residents. And so we took that, that second area out, and we have a much more, you know, pleasant and improved landscape area. There's a lot going on on a small site. The site is not like some of the sites that have dog parks where there's 40-plus acres. This is a very compact site, and it includes a public riverwalk to the right, to the far east. The drive is in the middle, and we have the redesigned amenity patio. We've also put some larger trees, some screening at Allen Street, and there's a retaining wall around the south, south and easterly side of the patio. So that's, that's the change, as I explained in the letter. We, in the letter requesting the minor modification, we don't think it's appropriate to have a dog park with all of the ramifications of a dog park, the barking, et cetera. We have put dispensers for dog, you know, dog pickup right at the top of the riverwalk and also at the crosswalk down into the lobby at the lower level. So if you need a doggy bag, you can get one and, you know, handle it appropriately with those dispensers. So that's the request, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Thank you very much. And we do have a staff report. Director Matczak, do you have anything else that you want to add to that summary? Okay. All right. Any members have any questions? All right, Member McCamey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we have you here, and we have one of the reps, could you give us a quick update on the project?
Sure.
Where you stand, you know, I've been by it, seen what you've done, and, you know, what the kind of the timeline is?
Yeah, just, Rich can get into the details. We did last year, when we started with the site work, we did go to the East Braintree Combine and give a report at the Yacht Club with Keith Construction is the general contractor. They're a great contractor, and I'll let Rich talk about what the updates are. But the site work is done, the mesh is in there, and I think Rich will tell you they're about to go vertical by the fall.
Okay. Good.
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, a lot of this project focused on the subsurface work that was being done and the micro piles, the pin system that went in. That's all been completed, all the underground, you know, the heavy utility, the drilling. There was this specialty contractor that had to come in called Helical Construction, and they do the, they do the micro piles. That's where you saw the drilling that was going on for probably about four months on site. That's done. They have the foundations, as Frank mentioned, the structures that were going in and the concrete's being poured. So that's, that will be done this summer, at the end of the summer, and we expect to be going vertical in the fall.
Yep. And then, how long do you expect it's going to take you to complete the project?
So we're actually about 10 days ahead of construction, so we're on target for next, next mid-July, just about a year from now to get a C.O.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other members? Questions?
So will there be any restrictions or discouragement for tenants with dogs?
I don't think so.
No, not at all. So it's, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say it's, there's, there's no difference in having, residents be able to have dogs, is there actually going to be a dog wash station inside for pet owners that they can use as well? And no, we encourage dogs to a certain size level. So that's still, that's still, you know, there's no change in that.
Just one question. Was, was the dog park going to be limited to residents only?
Yes.
It was? Okay.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more questions, be looking for a motion on the request for minor modification, an approval of the minor modification. Motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
You too. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the last item on our Old New Business, which is the approval of the meeting minutes for May 13 and June 10, 2025. Are there any members who have comments or questions on those minutes? No? All right. Seeing none, I would say, nice work on some of the extensive minutes in there, and be looking for a motion to approve both of those minutes. We have a motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Great. Thank you. And it is past 7:15, so that brings us to the first item on our new public hearing agenda, which is a grading permit for 55 King Hill Road, Planning Board File 2504. Unlike the others, these are public hearings, so the public will have an opportunity to speak. I will turn it over to Director Matczak to read the legal notice first.
No, I was going to... We're just grabbing it. Thank you, Louise. Thank you, Louise. Notice is, notice is, notice is given by the planning board under provisions of Master and Rule Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 6, 11, and 12, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, July 8, 2025, at 7:15 p.m. in the Braintree Town Hall. Tonight, we are in the Johnson Chambers. The planning board will consider the application for special permit 135-1201, a grading permit, filed by Charles B. Almy III, who is the applicant. The applicant is seeking to build in addition to the north and east side of the existing dwelling and a deck attached to the rear, to the existing dwelling, and the expansion of the existing driveway. The rear yard is to be regraded and a retaining wall to be installed. The applicant is proposing to cut and fill in excess of two feet with the construction of a retaining wall up to seven, excuse me, up to six feet, along with drainage improvements. The property is located at 55 King Hill Road, Zoned Residence A, as shown on Assessors' Map, 1,033, Plot 24. The total size, the total lot size is 41,170 square feet. To review the materials, to review the application materials, please see the Department of Planning and Community Development at Town Hall, 1 JFK Memorial Drive, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Tuesday from 8:30 a.m. to 7 o'clock p.m., and on Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 1 o'clock p.m. and/or on the town's website, as these application materials were submitted on, excuse me, are also available on the current projects page.
Thank you. With that, we'll hear from the applicant's representatives. If you could just please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Sean Hardy, professional engineer with Hardy and Mander Design Group in Weymouth. The existing site's 55 King Hill Road, it's in a parcel that's approximately 4,100 square feet, has an existing single, single, single-family residence, sorry, and a bituminous concrete driveway. The topography of the site generally slopes from the southwest corner, the bottom left, down to the, at approximate elevation 155.8 or 156, and it slopes down across the, to the northeast corner to about approximate elevation 134. There is no stormwater controls on the site. We did a test pit out there. We found loomy sand, and groundwater was detected at about 48 inches where we dug. So the applicant's proposing to construct additions to the residence. You can, on the picture on the right, it's kind of a large addition to the right, as well as in the back and a deck in between, and do some grading in the backyard. Overall, the grading will result, when completed, approximately 8,100 cubic yards of material that will have to be brought in. And additionally, the driveway is getting revised. It's being made wider to accommodate additional vehicles. As a result of the additions in the driveway, impervious areas going from approximately 5,300 square feet up to 7,700 square feet, which represents about a 2,300 square foot increase. To mitigate that, we are proposing a series of nine Kultech 330 XL HD chambers to be piped directly from the roof leaders and downspouts. It's going to be located in the rear of the site. The result of that, it ends up in being a reduction in stormwater runoff and volume for all storms 2 through the 100, and using the NOAA Extreme Atlas as required under the stormwater bylaw. So that larger 100-year storm is just over eight inches in a 24-hour period, so it's sized for a pretty significant-sized storm. Additionally, proposed is filter fabric, or filter sock around the edge. In order for the grading, there is, you can see there's a proposed retaining wall that's being constructed. Because it's sized, it's over four feet, we included the structural drawings that have been already designed with that. They were included as part of the packet. We show it for reference purposes only, but there is another drawing, but probably not worth displaying because it's, it literally shows the, how many blocks, it's a block count and where they go. But, so that's a depiction of the drainage, the Kultech chambers located to the rear, and there's roof leaders piped all around the building. The reason we were pushing the chambers a little further back was because of that groundwater that we encountered at four feet. So we wanted to put it where the slope is, existing slope is down low, so we're trying to put it up in the new fill-type area to provide the required separation to groundwater. That's pretty much what I have to present. If you have questions?
All right. Thank you. I know I have a couple of questions, so I'll ask first if there's other members that have questions, comments. All right. Turn it over to Member McCamey first.
You don't want to go first.
You want me to go first?
Never go first. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Hardy, could you, I see the additions, and I'll come back to that in a second, is, are the additions going to be built on any of the fill that you're going to be bringing in? Meaning, are you going to fill it and then put the foundation?
No, because they need the four-foot, the frost wall, the foundation wall, so no, they're not going to be.
Okay. So whatever the elevation is, you're going to build on top of that?
Yeah.
The additions? Okay. I can, I can see that there's, as you described, multiple additions. I assume the one on the right, the L, is living quarters. I see you mentioned a deck. I don't know what that piece is on the left. Maybe you could describe that for us?
I think it's all living space. The intent is there's a, there's an elderly family member that's going to be brought into the home that is going to be living with them. So it's, it's not a very, the existing house isn't very large, so...
Yeah, I saw that.
They're looking to expand that, and like I said, to bring an elderly family member in.
Okay. So both, both of those areas are going to be living quarters, maybe a bathroom or something like that?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then a deck?
Yeah, that kind of straddles the two living spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, at the, at the farthest point where they're going to be, you know, putting on the additions, what's the elevation change from the, from the house down to the end of that? Is it four feet, five feet?
Existing or proposed?
Yeah, existing and, you know, what you're going to do.
I'm going to run back and grab my plan because I cannot read that.
Okay. Thank you. I can't either.
I see it as a 150 in the bottom, this back corner, to be just a, just a little bit under 142.
Okay, so eight, eight-foot...
You saved me. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that right on the plan?
It's funny, I can see with my glasses still about four feet, and then I can't see anything beyond that, so...
I can barely see you.
Yeah, at the back of the proposed addition, we are at elevation 150, and it is proposed at the back corner to be 142.
Okay. So if, eight feet or so, are you going to have some sort of basement or walkout area underneath those living quarters?
It kind of is. So the existing house now, if you, existing, you can kind of go in, in the back, and the way that... way the grading is, so at the front of the house, it's like elevation 154 down to 150, so it's somewhat exposed already, so it's going to be similar to that.
Okay. Is there a basement there now?
I believe there is.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll go now, since Member McComme pressured me to go sooner. So, my questions all mainly have to do with the retaining wall along the line. It seems like, I guess, how far off of the property line is it? It seems close to be able to construct and maintain the wall?
It's close. I think we showed it a foot off, but it's retaining us, so it's easier to construct. You can build it from our side and stack the walls, and you fill behind it as you go. And it's the large blocks, so I don't know that there's much in the way of maintaining it.
Okay. And it looks like, and I might be wrong, it looked like the unbalanced fill, so the drop-off on the neighbor's side was around six feet, six to maybe eight feet in some spots, is that right? Or do you know?
For the top of a wall to the bottom of a wall?
Correct. Or more precisely, the top of the wall to the grass, if the bottom of the wall is under the neighbor's grass.
Yeah, it ranges up front from about four feet down to about seven feet.
Yeah. Is there any fencing or anything proposed for the top of the wall?
Yeah, there'll have to be fall protection at least on that, yeah.
Okay.
That would be required certainly by the building inspector. I don't know that they've picked yet what fence they would put, but...
Mm-hmm. Okay. And have they, have you talked at all about moving that closer in, so that it's not right on the neighbor's property line?
No, I mean, I think they're trying to maximize use of the yard. They are proposing landscaping along up there as well. You know, to the rear, it's kind of an industrial-type property, you know, they're, when they'll be out enjoying their yard, it's probably, there's not going to be too many people on a weekend at the industrial portion, so they're just trying to maximize the use.
Okay. All right. Well, that answers my questions for now. Any other members that have questions, comments? Member Conley.
I'd want to see the fall protection noted in the decision, that that would be included.
And Director Matzek, I skipped you, but did you want to have anything to add to the presentation for the applicant?
I have the applicant, you can all leave your notes.
Okay.
I do have the block plan, if you would like to see that.
Yeah, if you could pull up the block plan, that would be helpful.
It's not very exciting. But it's got the structural engineer's stamp on it, which is the...
I'm a resident of 41.
Do you want me to hand the mic? All right. Member Kane?
I mean, it's not really, I guess my place, it's more a resident, I would hope, would come forth, but as I look at that block plan, that's awful striking to me. If I was a neighbor living at parcel 41, I'd, those two residences to the east, that would be pretty off-putting, but perhaps, like, to just reiterate Chairwoman Kim's points, I think it would be nice to see some landscaping or something to break that up, but I guess I'll defer back to the chairwoman as to whether that's an appropriate request to make in this property line.
I guess we'll see. It is a public hearing, so we'll start there and see if there's anybody who has any comments or questions. So, any other, no? Okay. So with that, I will turn it over if there's any public comments or questions on 55 King Hill Road. If there is, just come up and introduce yourself.
Mike Modestino, and I represent the next-door neighbor who's with me here, Ron Aiello. And I also represent Roger Aiello, who lives, who has property to the rear of this property, and he also lives at 24 Fabiano Drive. He couldn't be here tonight. I had a question for Sean. I've worked with Sean regularly on matters, and I'm just a little bit confused about the height of the retaining wall. Does it vary from one place to another? If he could just answer that?
If he can just go up to the mic also, please. Thank you.
It does vary, because we're trying, we are sloping, we're proposing sloping this yard back, but less extreme than it currently is, and the driveway adjacent slopes a little faster. So, up front, we have a top of a wall at about 150, and the existing ground is at 144. Where in the back, we're proposing, we're at about top of a wall in the very back corner, we're at 142, and existing is at 136. So, we're dropping it as we go, but not as fast as the existing grade drops.
Okay. And could you just answer one more question? Is that 100 and, 215 feet going on the easterly side, and then 70 on the northerly side?
The 272 represents a property line distance, but based on, it's probably about 180 feet of wall, and then that back 124, again, it's maybe 60% of that one, so it's probably another 70 there.
Makes sense. Thank you. Thank you. I represent the neighbor, Mr. Aiello, who may have something to say as well. We're not really against the project. He has no issue over them trying to enhance their house and put an addition on the house. He doesn't care if it's 4,000 square feet, or whatever it is. What he's concerned about is the dust problems, first of all, from the construction that's been going on. And the construction has been going on, even though there was a building permit, grading permit applied for. Work has been done on the property, I have the photographs that show that, and dust has been a problem. The second issue is the drainage issues. My client is deeply concerned about drainage in the area. He's lived next door, in the next-door house, for 70 years, and he's very concerned about the drainage problem being a problem going forward. Right now, cars have been covered with dirt and dust over the past several weeks. The screens of the house have been covered with dirt. The house on the left, Preziosi family, reports to my client that he's had the same problem. So, we're concerned about that. We're concerned about, you know, doing things like putting up a construction fence. So, if this is approved, we'd ask that some conditions be made, construction fence in addition to the retaining wall while the construction is going on. It's a concern, and the photographs, I think, would depict what I'm talking about, if you can give me the photographs. So I've been to the house a couple of times now, over the past couple of weeks, and I've seen, you know, the grade be flattened, and a whole lot of work been done on the property. Still concerned about the height of the property, at the rear end of the property, and I would ask that the board consider taking a look at these diagrams of photographs that depict exactly what my client's talking about. They also depict in the lower area, below the property involved, which would be Mr. Aiello, Roger Aiello's property, where he runs his business out of. It's done a lot of damage, the water draining down there to the asphalt in that area. So I would ask you to take a look at that. And, trust me, we believe in Sean Hardy. I've worked with him before on multiple projects. I believe what he has to say. My client's not against the owner of this property from going forward and enhancing his house and making it better. He just wants to make sure it's safe for the neighbor, for all the neighbors, and would ask you to consider that as well. And if he do approve this, we'd ask that you make some conditions to protect the neighborhood. If I could approach and give you some of these photographs?
Yes, please do. Where is this one taken from?
From the back of my driveway, looking up to King Hill Road.
Go that way first. All right. And this one's from your property as well?
Yes.
Looking up at their property?
Actually, I apologize, that's the back of the property, that's my brother's property looking up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'd just give you the backside of that hill that's raised up at the present time. Maybe the plan is to flatten it out, I don't really know.
And these photos represent...
It's the property line.
Okay.
So I stand in my driveway and look up at that.
Okay.
Eight to 10 feet at least.
And was this grassed before, or has it looked like this?
It was grassed. We used it for landfill, we put leaves, they put mulch, they put wood chips, there's everything in there, 70, 50 years of brass clippings, leaves, debris.
Okay.
Now that it's covered with dirt and stone, and anything else they could find.
All right. Thank you.
And I'm all set, but if you have anything to say to the board?
Yes, my name's Ron Aiello. Thank you very much. I don't know, has anyone been up there at all? Take a peek?
I haven't.
Okay. Well, that's good. Again, I've lived there my whole life, it was my parents' home. This is his grandparents' home, they were uncles, brothers. So we're kind of family, so it's a little difficult to be here, but we are still very concerned. That's high, very high. And that plan for the drainage, I'm like, this is, this looks like it's, they're building an industrial park with quite a lot. I don't understand it. We need some guarantees that it's going to work, there's going to be vegetation, they're going to put a construction fence, we have kids going up and down my driveway, we have grandchildren that come and visit. We need these guarantees. Again, I've lived here for 70 years, never had to come to a board in my life, ever, when I am here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public here on 55 King Hill Road? All right.
And just for the record, I am not opposing the house. I hope they build a Taj Mahal. It's the drainage, it's the mess, it's the driveways breaking up, it's way too much. We've never had anything like this. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hardy, could you come back up for a few more questions, please? Could you tell us what the status of the stormwater permit is?
The stormwater permit?
Yeah, I saw in some of the filings that DPW said a minor stormwater permit was required.
Yeah, it is required. Why it would qualify as a minor stormwater is we have to get a permit from Planning Board first. So, we haven't applied for it yet, but I think what you saw was comments from the stormwater division asking us to clarify the O and M budget. There was a typo saying that the basin does not require regular maintenance, but it does require regular maintenance, so that they're going to require that. They wanted, we do show the test pit on the plan, but they want the test pit as part of the formal filing, confirm the budget for O and M, but it says comments will be addressed when submitting for the minor stormwater permit.
Okay. Do any other members have any comments or questions at this time? Member Kane?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused. Has a building permit been issued, or has this work been going on?
I believe a building permit's been issued for the foundation for the house.
For the house, okay. But the fill part is, that's not part of a building permit? That's...
That's part of this permit.
That's part of this permit? Okay.
Looking at the plan, the existing house is...
Looking at the plan, the existing house and the addition is, as we spoke about, is at the current grade of the site, right? This permit really is for the back, the rear of the property, and you're bringing up everything, excuse me, from really this area back. So the wall will run in an L formation all the way down. Obviously, it's going to have to meet stormwater, you know, as designed. You know, Hillary and the stormwater team will take a look at that. But that is because it's a change of the topography, that's why we're here tonight. And I did take a ride by the site. Is, with all due respect, is it a lush rear yard? No. You know, I can't, I'm not going to sit here and say it's a manicured lush yard at this point. And so I think the pictures kind of speak to the existing conditions. And a picture say a thousand words.
The homeowner mentioned vegetation is one of the comments. To get just like a little bit more clarification on what that might look like, and if there's, Mr. Hardy, if you're a representative of the owner tonight, or if the owner's here, if there's any way that we can incorporate some vegetation along that wall for the owner. I think it would also go a long way to maybe mitigating some of the rainwater that would come off of the resident that was here today's driveways. I would assume it would collect against that wall, if it was built one foot off of the property line. I imagine you're going to have some sort of water issues there. So maybe that's, having some vegetation there is a way to mitigate that. And then the other issue was, you know, cleanliness of dust, which I'm sure we can have some sort of construction plan that would address that, mitigation, spray downs before heavy equipment. Is there some sort of physical barriers?
Yeah, we'd mandate that as well, but certainly a condition, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry if I... So, we do propose, so the landscaping that we're proposing is up on the wall, but the land adjacent, the owner's land next to it, it's paved, it's a driveway. So, we're proposing three paper birches, four feet apart, a dwarf, I don't even know what that, a muggle pine, a blue spruce, three rhododendrons along the back, three feet spacing, another blue spruce on the back-left corner, three rows of sharrons along the left property line, and then tiger lilies and assorted perennials up as it comes around, and I'm sorry.
Oh yeah, that's at the top of the wall, right?
It's at the top of the wall.
Seven feet above, like, and the person's down, can the neighbor even see that? Or is that just more allocated from the owner of the property?
Well, it's trying to, I know it's required to have landscaping as part of our proposed plan, so that's what they were trying to do.
I mean, is that kind of what your understanding was, sir?
No, I never had an understanding of what they were doing.
Okay.
I had no understanding of that. I've been told nothing. And just for the record, this is already filled. This is a permit to fill, isn't it, tonight?
That's my understanding.
It's completely filled.
Filled, but without a wall?
I can't tell you how many truckloads, truckload after truckload after truckload. It's done. That's what the pictures are showing you. See how high? That was ground level.
Yeah. So that's not just excavation?
So I don't understand why we're here for that.
Sounds like maybe some work's been, it sounds like you're...
The work has been done. When did you go there?
Last week.
Did you see it all?
Sorry, there was a couple. What I saw was about...
Sorry, I didn't mean to pass it like that.
Oh yeah, actually.
Planning Director Peter Matzek, what I saw was about three piles of dirt, looked like a 10-wheeler just dumped some dirt in the backyard.
I wish you took a ride down my driveway, because if you go down my driveway and look up, it's all filled. This is done.
I'm happy to...
We're talking about stuff that's already been done. And now, tonight, we're asking for a permit. It doesn't make sense.
Well, I'm happy to take a ride, I'm happy to...
I'd love to meet any of yous. Come on, I'll make the coffee.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think what we see a lot of times with these grading permits is that people don't know that it's there, and we get a lot of after-the-fact grading permits or mid-project grading permits, and so... And so our job here is both to review what is intended and then incorporate that with what's already done and incorporate whatever it might be to protect, to one, comply with the bylaws and then protect the neighbors to the extent we're allowed to do that in the bylaws. So I understand your frustration. I just-
I just didn't, I never understood that to be the case, but if you say so.
Yeah, I mean, we attempt to get the word out as much as possible about the grading permits, but I would say, if I was to guess, in the time I've been on the planning board, seventy-five percent of them at least, the works, no, Member McCauley's been here a lot more, has a higher percentage. Many of them unfortunately happen after. And so we definitely, we definitely understand your-
Why do we call it a special permit for grading if it's already been done? What do we do now?
Right. And so now we figure out where we go from here. And I'm not saying that we do one thing or another, but we figure out where we go from here.
Come on up, I beg you to come up, please.
All right. So I think from my perspective, what I would want to see before we make any decision on the application is to see a plan that incorporates the fall protection on the retaining wall, what that looks like, incorporates landscaping on the neighbor's side, particularly the residential neighbor. As far as the industrial, I don't know if landscaping makes sense there or something else makes sense there. But I do think that retaining wall needs to be off of the property line enough to break up the look of having the very large retaining wall that somebody is looking at.
For construction fencing, right, and dust prevention and stuff that affects, sorry, yeah, I've already said it.
Say it again.
Member Kim, I think that's a great point, because that also gives the offset right for them to put up some sort of construction barriers to prevent that dust that that the resident is concerned about too, so.
And put a pause on site work until this is hashed out?
I don't know what's going on, perhaps, so. I knew he was digging the foundation within the last week or so, but I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I think that the site work should be paused until we have more information on the grading permit. And if there is open piles of dust, they should be covered in accordance with standard erosion controls so that the dust isn't blowing in the meantime. But I think that that probably makes the most sense for now and get the information coming in. And of course, if we can't understand where it's going, then we do have, you know, the right as a board to say that it has to go back the way that it was. And we run into the difficulty with these after the facts and that we don't have a clear picture of what it was before. But we try our best to figure out what was done and how to address it going forward.
I don't know what it looks like now. It's been a while since I've been to the site, but the existing conditions plan was done in February two thousand and twenty-five. And I think that's representative of at least that.
Fair point, yes. All right. Any other members have any other comments or anything to ask before they come back?
Well, you know, you've been to a number of our meetings, Mr. Hardy. This is one of the, my pet peeves that we have. As the chair said, so many people come in after the fact. Contractors know better. All these people know better. And they just decide, oh, I'm just going to go ahead. We end up in situations like this where we could have put, you know, protections in place, you know, like dust screens, like construction walls, so on and so forth. This almost begs to me a cease and desist, but that's up to the building inspector. I mean, we've done it before. But maybe in a more gentler way, take a pause, do not do anything else.
I'll relay that.
Yeah, I mean, and tell the homeowners that they really have made a big mistake and need to be very careful going forward. What happens if one of the grandkids is running up the hill and has an accident, you know? And it's not even permitted. Those are the types of things that, you know, we worry about, the worst-case scenario. So I don't mean to be mean, but it just happens all the time, and everybody just tries to get away with it. And something's going to happen. Things have happened before. So let's just make sure this project doesn't happen. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, be looking for a motion to continue to August 12th. We have a motion by Member Kane. Do we have a second? Second by Member Conley. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, while we clean up, we can go through legal notices, 29 Messina Drive, Planning Board filed 2505. If I could have Director Matzek read the legal notice.
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of MasterCard Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and 11, and the zoning, excuse me, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that the public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, July 8, 2025, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. Tonight, we are in the Carl R. Johnson Memorial Chambers. The planning board will consider the application for a special permit under Section 135-601, permitted use in district and site plan review filed by Wicked Puppies LLC, care of Ting Ting Lee, who is the applicant. The applicant is seeking a special permit and site plan review to allow for the operation of a full-service animal establishment within the commercial zoning district. The proposed establishment will include a doggy daycare, dog grooming, and overnight boarding. The property is located at 29 Messina Drive and is within the commercial zoning district as shown on Assessor's Map, 1,059, plot 5D. The lot area is nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four square feet. To review application material, please visit the Department of Planning and Community Development at hours of Town Hall, and/or all information has been posted on the website. Before I do hand this microphone over, I do want to just note that the applicant did send in, and it was received today, a updated kind of site plan that kind of shows parking area that was printed on the 11 by 17, as well as there was kind of a overall memorandum circulated last week, which was an overview of the business and a business plan. So I think the site plan was very helpful today to take a look at, just to kind of get our eyes on what will be built if approved on this site. I also did try to circulate some pictures of the existing conditions. This is a fairly industrialized site. I believe that there are no, there's no trees, there's no vegetation on the site as it stands today. And this is a reuse of the existing building. Other than that, I would, I'll hand the microphone back.
All right, thank you. And do we have anyone here? Is the applicant here to present the application? Yes, if you could just please go up to the microphone and introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ting Ting Lee. I'm the owner and founder of Wicked Puppies. So this idea came to me last year. I have a neighbor who has been in the dog business for thirty years, and we're friends. So we came up with the idea of building a dog daycare, because we both live in Waymouth, and my dog goes to a dog daycare. I don't think he's being treated fairly there, so we are very big on the animal welfare. So this is what we want to do. We want to build a place that treats animal right and serves the community, raise awareness of the animal welfare, animal well-being. And also, dog daycare is a very recession-proof business, and we like to keep the economy in where we live. I'll take any questions.
Just briefly, I'm the architect of record, and Jacob is the designer. Just to reiterate what Mr. Matzek, I hope I got that name right, said, it is a very industrial site. The two top photographs show you the front and the back of the building. We've done preliminary zoning calculations and have determined that we have adequate parking. Our intention is to do an interior mezzanine that might add some square footage. But just remember, most of the space is occupied by dogs, and dogs don't drive. So our hope is that we have a little bit of a buffer, we have two extra parking spaces, which will allow for us to cover for the, you know, interior mezzanine added square footage, which is still being determined what that is. So I just wanted to make sure we're being clear and transparent. We have some proposed exterior improvements that we're still working through, what they might be. But most of it is going to be aesthetic and cosmetic. There is an existing sign that will, you know, update to reflect Wicked Puppies. And then we're going to do some sort of cosmetic exterior signage and so on, just more as a marketing and branding exercise. So folks who are driving by, going to the animal hospital, can see that there's a companion business here that will help, first of all, the community, maybe the new residents of the Wood properties who now no longer have a dog park. So it's still in the conceptual stage. We wanted to bring it to you so that we could incorporate any feedback you have before we take it to the next step. And if you have any questions about the interior, Jacob can answer.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jacob Lair. I'm the designer of the project.
You could just go a little closer to the microphone, just in case. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Lair, and I'm the designer of the project, along with my friend Jennifer Medina. And again, we're working under Rashmi Ramaswamy's license as the architect of record, and we're doing everything according to code, of course. And this is a preliminary plan as of now, and we are willing to incorporate any feedback you guys have, questions, comments, recommendations. At this stage, we're still very flexible. However, we are excited to move forward and bring a new dog space to Braintree. Can't wait.
All right, thank you. And Director Matzek, did you want to add anything at this time? No? All right. I'll turn to some of the questions. How many dogs do you anticipate having?
So I think with the existing buildings, the front is two levels, and then the back is a tall garage area. And then if we are allowed to add the yards, I think we can easily host a hundred dogs per day, just for the daycare business. There's also, we're also going to desire a grooming room. And then we have two zones for the kennel. And then, so, you know, I don't know how to calculate those, because those flat trees, you know, for kenneling, I think for holidays, it's going to be a lot more dogs kenneling than regular. You know, summertime is probably also going to be more dog in the overnight kenneling, because parents, you know, go to town, travel and things like that. Grooming, I also don't have exact number. So, but I think just for the daycare alone, it can definitely hold a hundred dogs per day.
And just to clarify, that includes both small dogs and large dogs, so it's not a hundred large dogs.
Right. They're in different zones, because dogs have to be separated by their temperament, activity level. So indoor will be different zones for, according by, you know, their play style and things like that. The yards are also split in two, so they will be separated as well.
Okay. And what are, are there particular drop-off and pickup hours? Is it just rotate through the day, or how do you anticipate that working?
Yeah, so the Monday to Fridays, the opening hours are 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. Saturday is 8 AM to 6 PM, and Sunday is closed.
And I assume with the overnight, you'll have the place staffed all night?
Yes, yeah. For the overnight boarding, I want to keep at least one staff on site, one to two staff on site, depending on how many dogs. A lot of the dog daycares, they lock the dog in the cage and lock the door, and they go home. But that's not the business model I want to pursue. I want to have a staff member on site. As long as we have a dog in business, we'll have a staff member on site. And then, so we're building a small office with a pull-out couch, so the person can stay there comfortably overnight.
Okay. And what use are you pursuing? And I, a question under-
Zoning summary, it's-
Is it the animal retail and grooming?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I don't, I know, I know we've had some changes in animal-related businesses in Braintree, but I don't see clearly that either of the uses allow for overnight kenneling. And I was looking at it today, so I don't have background information on whether or not we've done anything or haven't done anything. And I think before we move forward, we need to look at that a little bit closer. But it just doesn't seem like a super close fit for the retail and grooming service.
So, just to make sure we're clear, are you saying that the animal retail and grooming service does not include overnight kenneling?
I'm not saying it definitely doesn't. I'm just saying I'm not sure that it does. Yeah. So that's, that's basically it. I think when that was put into effect, I don't think it was anticipated to include grooming. I'm not saying that it definitely doesn't. I just wanted to sort of understand where you're coming from on it, so that we could take a closer look at it. I also noticed on the site plan that there are some trees on the back of the lot currently, and there's a row of parking back there. Do you, but I can't, I can't tell for sure if the trees are on the adjacent property or on this one. Do you know if those-
Behind the property line, there's like a fifty-foot easement type thing. It's not technically an easement, but the trees are-
Yeah. If you're looking at the photo that I see on the desk-
Right.
The image generated is actually from a 3D scan of the space, so it might be kind of a little bit incomplete under the trees. But yes, there is space for parking on that back wall.
Okay. All right. I think that's all the questions I have for right now. Any other members that have question? All right, Member McCauley?
Thank you. The chair asked the question about how many dogs. You said a hundred. You know, I'm not familiar, again, with the regulations. I don't know if that's too many, you know, you know, I don't know who regulates that.
Currently, there's no law on how many square foot needs to be kept for dogs. I asked ChatGPT. So there is a recommendation. I think it's, there are certain square footage for large dogs, there's certain square footage for small dogs. So I did a little calculation. If I do, say, if I do half and half, have fifty large dogs, fifty small dogs, that space is definitely way enough for to host a hundred dogs.
Great. I'm happy that ChatGPT has that, but that doesn't necessarily mean that Braintree regulations allow a hundred.
Right.
So, you know, there's a little gray area here that the chair brought up, but, you know, I don't know what that, it's the Health Department, but I'm just saying that more research is needed, so that we understand what the number is.
So there is a study from the USDA for animal care tech note, I can circulate this later, that describes the minimum floor space for dogs in kenneling zones.
Is that, is that Braintree regulations?
It's the USDA, not specific to Braintree.
So we're here in Braintree, we follow Braintree laws, and that's what we have to adhere to. Okay, so I don't know what those are. Maybe we don't have any. But that needs to be researched, just like what the chair was saying. How many spaces are required for this property in terms of parking spaces?
Twenty, based on the one, one for every two hundred and fifty square feet for that animal retail.
Okay, so twenty. Are there, I don't see any stripes. So are we talking about free-form parking, or are we going to, we're going to put some stripes on? Oh, sorry, I'm looking at, I got the other one, okay.
Do you see it?
Yeah, sorry.
I numbered the spaces there as well.
Okay, so you got twenty?
I have twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, thank you. I missed that. I just looked at the pictures. I'd also suggest that you check our signage rules before you go- also suggest that you check our signage rules before you go crazy, you know, putting up all that.
Yeah, our signage is going to be fairly limited, but, you know, I hear your point and we'll have a signage package and so on.
As you heard from the, from the last project, it's better to follow the rules because we have a lot of people that don't. And you're going to develop a landscape plan, which will be part of your final drawings, I assume, you know, because we, we need final drawings, not just idea sketches.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
This is our first, just wanted to hear everything the folks had to say before we took it too far.
I got you. Thank you. And again, I don't know what the rules are for creating that little space in the back for the dogs to run. I don't know if the chair has any idea. Is that, is that under our purview to create this space here?
Right. I think, I think it would fall within some use of the space. I think we just have to, you know, I just think it's something different than what we have the background for. So we'd have to look closely to make sure that it works from a neighbor perspective, site perspective, noise perspective, and, and the hours and so forth. So I think there's definitely a good start, but a few other things to look at more closely.
And because this is the first of its kind, you might not have, we may need to work collaboratively with you to kind of get to an accepted look.
Well, my, my cousin owned a dog grooming and daycare center, so I'm familiar with some of these things, even though I'm allergic to dogs. But so my final question that the chair just mentioned is noise. You know, I know we're in an industrial area here, but I guess my question is, what consideration have you given for, you know, reducing the noise?
Um, during.
Maybe that's another thing that you need to think about.
During the day or?
Say again?
During the daytime?
Every, every time. You got neighbors, you know, I don't know what they're going to say.
Then there's only two residences within three hundred feet, and they're right at the edge, about two hundred and ninety such. And for the outside, there is an office building next door, and the shed roofs are designed to reflect some of the noise away from that towards the tire shop. And also, the fencing will be more solid so that it will also reduce noise at kind of human level. And then also throughout the space, as it's constructed, we're developing spray sound isolation foam and insulating many of the walls against sound, not just for neighbors, but also for occupants themselves. So sound isolation is a big problem in a lot of daycares, especially as we're starting with a large open garage. So we're going to be reinforcing a lot with spray foam isolation. There's some products that we found along with wall treatments that include sound isolation, sound isolating, light fixtures, whole nine yards. I could keep going. But yeah, sound is a big problem in daycares, and we're trying our best.
Okay, great.
And we're happy to work with you guys to.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We, you know, it's just, that's just one of the commonsensical things that comes up.
Of course.
Right. We are also in collaboration with two engineering teams and who are only, they only build animal-related buildings. So one is specialized in MEP, the other one specializes in products. So they have a lot of experience. They built quite a few animal hospitals around here, daycares, shelters. So they have a lot of experience on recommending the products that we use to keep the minimal, to keep the noise minimal as possible.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
Yeah. They're, coming, if you want to, it's called Design Learned. They've done projects in Massachusetts, and they will be recommending a lot of products along the lines of kenneling space, et cetera, along your questions around minimum square foot per dog. So we'll be leaning on their expertise to figure out standard best practices and collaborating with you guys to make sure that fits with your needs as well.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go on.
Just one quick.
All right.
So from the financial perspective, which may not be the same as the planning perspective, but if this is, probably do some analysis on, does this work without the overnights? And does it work at seventy-five dogs instead of a hundred dogs or whatever? And does that impact, you know, how you'd plan to open and how many parking spaces you'd need and so on?
Yeah. I think even though we're, we're limited at seventy-five dogs without grooming and the overnight kenneling, we would still be profitable because we won't spend as much in construction. Currently, we're trying to add more space because, you know, I was thinking maybe we'll add more kenneling. So with the limitation, we will alter the design to fit with the law. So, but, you know, like what I said, I did my research. This is definitely like a recession-proof business because when economies are bad, people tend to work more. When they work more, they need to order dog more, put dog in the, in the daycare more. So, yeah, we, we will still be okay economy-wise.
Thank you.
My questions have already been asked, so good job, board. But the one thing I'd just like to, to say is thank you for bringing your design team so early. It's something that we certainly would like to see more of from our applicants, and I think it's a good show of faith on your part. So thank you for letting us have this opportunity.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right. Any other members that have comments or questions? No? Okay. Also, just note that your parking spot fifteen doesn't look like you can get in and out of there. But I think.
Good point.
Twenty-one spaces, right.
Still one extra.
That's true. All right. Well, I think.
Keep down one for bicycle.
Yeah. So I think we need to look on, on our end and collaboratively with you, as you had mentioned, on restrictions that might make sense, the use with respect to our zoning, and, and making sure that we're, you know, faithful to what we allow in town and looking at how we can, you know, work this out. It is, you know, a business that I think would be, you know, certainly a lot of demand. So it's just making sure that the site makes sense for it and that the design makes sense for it. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here on twenty-nine Messina Drive can come up and give your name and address? Nope. Okay. So I think we would need to continue this to August and would need some additional information on the site. It might be that if you want us to look at the use on our end before you spend more time putting together the details of it, we think we can certainly do that. And then we can come up with a plan for the submission for the next meeting.
That'd be great.
That'd be fantastic.
Give us a contact person perhaps that we could follow up with. That would also be helpful so we can progress, you know, appropriately by the time we come back in front of you and having a responses to make the best use of everyone's time.
Yeah, definitely. If you can just follow up with Director Matzek.
Ting Ting and I have been working well the last few days.
Perfect. Yeah.
Great.
We're a team.
So conversation is moving forward.
Okay.
Which department should I reach out to find out about the limitation on the dog?
I would speak to the Board of Health. And, and yes, if you don't mind sending the USDA guidance that we have that. I'm guessing that Braintree doesn't have any rules because I don't think that we have any boarding in Braintree, although I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. But definitely speak with the Board of Health and get their comments and feedback on it as well. And send that over and be in touch with Director Matzek, and then we will go from there. All right. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to continue to August twelfth. A motion by Member Kane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And that concludes our planning board agenda for this evening. So be looking for a motion to close, not so fast, close the planning board meeting for tonight. Motion by Member Kent. The second by Member Conley. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.